I call the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica to order for February 23rd, 2015. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keener?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Nyheart?
Present.
Mayor Protem DeGree?
Present.
Mayor Irvin?
Present. The salute to the flag will be led by Councilmember O'Neal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a closed session report?
A reportable action?
Okay, thank you very much. This brings us to the consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member or person in the audience requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed under the consideration portion of the agenda. Time limits on comments is three minutes or less. Okay. Seeing that I have no cards, I'll bring it back to council.
I have a question on number.
I would just like to make some comments about the Manor drive over process.
Sure. For those comments, do you recommend that I poll it from the consent and put it under considerations or just a brief comments okay to accept now?
Totally up to the discretion of the mayor, but if it's just a brief comment then, and no deliberation, then he could make his comment and the council can still vote on the consent calendar.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and keep it in consent and Councilmember O'Neal?
I just wanted to say that I know, it's too bad Van's not here, but maybe Ray can convey it, is that I know this is something Van's been working on since I was elected to council about a year and a half, I guess, and it's nice to see it progress slowly through Caltrans and the challenges I know he's been facing at Caltrans and stuff like that. So I just wanted to thank Van for that effort because I do feel that if this is done, it will lessen, or make less traffic at the overcrossing of Oceana and Manor. And I think it'd be, hopefully it'll save us some money from having to do the whole widening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would appreciate it if there could be some simple announcement on the website and maybe your manager speaks to the Tribune so that people, because this has, people have been asking about both the on-ramp and the overcrossing, so if some mention of that could be made, so they're aware of what people are doing in the area. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, I'd like to add that it would be very informative for people to know what the timeline is and what the future steps are, and it would be very helpful to have it on the website. So thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion? Okay. Councilmember O'Neal?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as posted.
Councilmember Nyheart?
Second.
Okay. So, time to vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay. And that leads us to a very special presentation I'm going to be presenting tonight. I am very proud to present a proclamation for the 25th Annual Sports Hall of Fame. Four new individuals will be inducted into the Hall of Fame to join, I think, I believe it's 134 other very prominent members, and this is always such an honor to be part of and really creates great feelings in Pacifica and it just points to how much we have to be proud of being in this community. So I know Horace Hinshaw is in the audience and I'd love for you to come up and I'll read the proclamation for you. City of Pacifica, Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame, 2015 inductees. For over 50 years, Pacifica has produced many, 30, 50 years it is, Pacifica has produced many talented athletes to both amateur and professional sports. And the Pacifica Sports Club has formulated a Sports Hall of Fame to honor local sports celebrities. And the City of Pacifica recognizes the Sports Hall of Fame as a lasting tribute to the rich sport history of Pacifica. And the City of Pacifica has dedicated a wall of fame to the enshrines at the Pacifica Community Center. And this year marks the 25th anniversary of the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony and will be held on February 28th, 2015. And the 2015 Sports Hall of Fame inductees are Gary Emick, open water swimmer, Doreen Basuano, collegiate volleyball athlete and coach, Mario DiCaro, two-time All-American collegiate wrestler, and Dave Mercurio, president of the Pacifica Tiger Sharks Pop Warner Football and Cheer Program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the City of Pacifica on behalf of the entire city council does hereby recognize the outstanding contributions these four Sports Hall of Fame inductees have made to sports recreation in the community and join with the Pacifica Sports Club in honoring you on this very special occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, it's always a privilege to recognize our sports and our athletes in our city. You know, this town's been around a long time and sports was right here from get-go and sports organizations set up when incorporation was done in 1957, and we still continue to be active in the community. And it's really a privilege to honor these people and this year, the four athletes that you mentioned are so deserving. And they go in this year as, it's like 140 people will have been recognized over the last 25 years. Believe it or not, it is the 25th anniversary, so we're very proud. And I know that you'll be there as a guest and also to welcome the inductees. So thank you very kindly.
Great, thank you. And I have, some of the council members would like to say a few words. Mayor Protem DeGree?
Yes, I really enjoy going to the presentation. I really thank you also for the Hall of Fame and the community center. I mean, for those of us that like to get a sense of history and the community, this event really, really gives you a unique perspective. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We've got room for, I figured it out the other day looking at the wall, we probably have room enough on that wall for another 10 years, so we'll keep going.
Councilmember Nyheart?
I just wanted to say thank you, Horace, for all that you do in this regard. And having gone a couple of times, several times, I can just say that I underscore Mayor Protem's comments because it is historical. I mean, I was there for some pretty amazing things, so thank you. Thank you for bringing that back to us.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say really thank you so much. I love the Hall of Fame and I look forward to seeing who's there every year. I've seen many of my classmates go, you know, on the Hall of Fame and it's also so exciting to see people that it's not just in high school, but it's, you know, it's very, significantly this year, we had one of the members that was 62-years-old.
Yes.
Swimming to Alcatraz. So all throughout your lives, you can achieve great things and the people in Pacifica continue to do that and provide all of us with so much pride in being part of this community. So thank you so much. It's a really incredibly wonderful event and I'm going to be very happy to be there on Saturday night, so thank you.
Thank you. When you're 62-years-old and you can swim from San Francisco to Alcatraz, amazing.
It's amazing. Never give up.
Should I take the proclamation with me then?
Yes.
Thanks, Horace, always.
Okay, that brings us to a public hearing. Introduction of ordinance amending Article 26 Public Utilities Residential and Commercial Antennas of Chapter 4, zoning of Title IX, planning and zoning of the Pacifica Municipal Code, verse reading TA 10315. On February 2nd, 2015, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this item by a 6-0 vote with one absence. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable councilmembers. For your consideration this evening is a zoning text amendment proposed by staff to clarify the development standards applied to wireless communications facilities within rights of way. These standards would apply to private and public rights of way, which include roads and streets citywide. Staff identified the need to revise the zoning standards after meeting with the wireless carrier considering construction of wireless facilities on utility poles along residential streets. While it was clear from the existing standards that the applications would require use permits, other standards were ambiguous or infeasible for carriers to follow. As a result, practically every application for a facility within a right-of-way would require a variance under the existing regulations. For staff, that was a significant indication that the council should consider amending the standards. The proposed ordinance amends the city's existing wireless facility regulations codified in Municipal Code Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 26, by providing specific development standards for wireless facilities in rights of way. These standards include standards, excuse me, these standards include height and width standards, spacing from other wireless facilities and utility poles, protection of areas immediately in front of and to the side of residences, and preservation of the usability of sidewalks and street parking. The ordinance also establishes a requirement for wireless facility operators to report to the city every two years on the status of their sites, indicating whether each site is operational and compliance with any conditions of approval, and maintain in a way that does not pose a hazard to public safety. In addition, the ordinance replaces references to city planner with planning administrator to reflect changes in staff organization since enactment of the original ordinance in 1997. In accordance with the municipal code, staff first presented the zoning text amendment to the Planning Commission, which considered it at a public hearing on February 2nd. The commission's discussion centered around requirements to stealth all new facilities, environmental review of the text amendment, and future wireless applications, the manner in which other cities regulate wireless facilities in rights of way, the reason for making limited changes rather than a comprehensive update, and collection of a fee to cover staff time involved in processing the biennial facility certifications. Staff revised the draft ordinance prior to city council consideration to reflect the Planning Commission's intent regarding stealth design and fee collection. Regarding environmental review, the proposed ordinance is exempt since it will not lead to any changes in the environment. Potential impacts from wireless facilities will be reviewed separately on a project basis as part of the discretionary review process. To the commission's question about a more comprehensive update, staff agreed that it may be useful at some point to undertake a comprehensive revision, but the intent of the current proposal was to make minor clarifying changes to the ordinance in a timely manner in expectation of forthcoming applications. Therefore, staff recommends the limited changes proposed at this time. The planning commissioner, with one commissioner absent unanimously moved to initiate the zoning text amendment, found the amendment consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan, found the proposed amendment exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and recommended approval of the proposed amendment by the city council. In staff's opinion, the proposed amendments will provide meaningful guidance to wireless facility applicants, eliminate the uncertainty contained in the city's existing wireless regulations, and at the same time protect, or preserve the city's authority to review all new wireless facilities and help to protect the character and aesthetics of residential neighborhoods. Staff kindly request the council move to read the proposed ordinance by title only and waive further reading and move introduction of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Do I have questions from council? Is it, okay. Councilmember, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, first of all, I just, it's hard to know where wireless communication is going. So with that said, I just want to ask a few questions about this because I'm not always sure given, given what's happening. So we're talking about transmission devices. In other words, they pick up a signal, they transmit it on. Am I correct?
We're talking about all manners of wireless communications facilities. There's the conventional panel antenna, which is a receiver and transmitter for cellular communications and data, voice, text, et cetera, as well as smaller general-purpose repeaters that are called, distributed antenna systems, or DAS, which is sort of a new wave of wireless deployment that we're seeing. They're smaller antennas throughout cities and throughout rights of way to provide a smaller but more pervasive backbone, and there may be future iterations that are still covered under this.
So I'm trying to understand the no, I'm on page 90 of the packet, which is basically page seven of the 11 in the ordinance itself, and I'm in the red section. Item number four, so it says, "No wireless communications facilities shall be installed on existing support structure located within the building profile of an existing residential structure."
I'm sorry, what section are you referring to?
I'm on page 711, item number four. I just want to understand what that means, because if, if I want to put a repeater on my house, is that a no-no?
What sort of repeater?
Well, maybe I want to boost my signal. I mean, there's all kinds of devices out there now, so I'm, I'm just, I'm asking for clarification because I'm no electronic expert.
Sure.
But I'm just thinking about what a residential owner might ask in this particular section. Knowing that you have discretionary, so we're, I'm really talking about not a wireless carrier, but something an individual might want to do.
Sure. So these standards apply to commercial transmitting.
Only.
Devices.
Okay.
That's as the wireless communications facility is defined on page two of 11. So residential devices would not be covered under.
Okay, so the secondary question becomes, I want to make a little extra money and have somebody put it on my house for the neighborhood.
Sure. So if it's.
So that falls under here and it's AT&amp;T that's putting it in?
Again, it's a bit hypothetical, but.
Yeah.
The general residential private use versus commercial public use, it would appear that that transition to serving not just one's own private residential needs, but providing a commercial service would be governed by these standards.
Okay, all right. But you would still decide on an individual basis?
Well, staff would review the information submitted with the application, ask for any clarifying information, and determine whether or not the ordinance would be applicable to a particular installation.
Okay. All right. I just think it's hard to, well, I'll make comments about it later, I just think it's hard to predict where we're going with electronics.
It absolutely is, and these regulations need to evolve over time as technology evolves.
Yeah.
And that's why we're back for an update. Traditionally, there weren't widespread deployments in rights of way, but that's becoming more and more prevalent.
Yeah.
Hence, we need to clarify standards that apply to those types of devices and potentially different types in the future.
And, and just to clarify, to your point, you are exactly correct that this is evolving and in fact, we may be back within the year for amendments or perhaps a big re-hall because the FCC just put out new, a new order related to wireless antennas and we're still determining what the implications of that are. So we may very well be coming back to you. This is something that is ever-changing.
Well, I was looking at this section in particular because I see people allowing permits on property and installations on, and so the logical, as they get smaller, as the devices get smaller, putting them in a house, and if the person decides that they want to put it on a house, that's why I was asking.
Understood. And as these devices get smaller and are in more places, the challenges may increase, but we'll adapt to them the best that we can and come back to your.
Know that I'm particularly fond of the last part of this where it says harmonious aesthetics of the neighborhood. Okay.
Councilmember Keener?
Yeah. So how many of these do you anticipate in a neighborhood, say, like Valamar?
It's difficult to say. We're aware of interest in installing 11 facilities in Valamar currently. We have not received applications for them, but we have met with the carrier who had preliminary plans and expressed serious interest. And there theoretically could be dozens more throughout the city, if not hundreds more. It's difficult to say. All of the easy sites, for the most part, have been serviced, and so infilling networks or increasing capacity will continually push these into more and more residential neighborhoods. That's, that's the trend currently in the industry.
Okay. And one other question is, where I live in Lindemar, we're sort of in the shadow of, you know, well, we're in a shadow with respect to connectivity. Will this relieve that?
Well, this, the ordinance.
Well, yeah, not the ordinance, but will, will this new infill technology take care of that?
That's generally the intent of these, these types of installations, to infill areas where they can't otherwise be serviced, perhaps by more centralized and economical larger antenna systems. And so it's likely that if you were to have an installation of this sort in your neighborhood, it would expand your access to data, voice, and other wireless services.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from council?
Well, those were questions.
I mean, questions? No? I just had a couple. In terms of, so the Planning Commission approved six to zero, were there any significant issues that were raised during their deliberation or?
Well, the Planning Commission made it clear that it wanted to require stealth or concealment parameters for new applications, which I think is consistent with what many cities are doing as these facilities evolve, and the best practices and sophistication of concealing these facilities has improved over time. So that's one element that we included in the proposed ordinance. Additionally, there was concern whether this would preempt future environmental review, and that's not at all the case. The ordinance itself is exempt because it's not leading to or granting authority for any construction in the built environment, but future applications, each one on a project basis, will receive environmental review. And so those were, I would say, two primary concerns.
Great, thank you for that update. That's perfect. So seeing that I don't have any more questions from council, I'm going to open public comment. And right now, I don't have any cards that are brought forth, so nobody would like to speak on this item. Give you a second. Then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for comments. Mayor Protem DeGree?
Right. I did have several questions, which I did ask ahead of time, and so I just wanted to make some comments. I was concerned because in the past, we did cover up this type of apparatus, and Ace Hardware is the one that I remembered, and it was terribly bulky, and so I wanted to be sure that that sort of type of covering up would not be. And so unless I'm mistaken, I'm kind of reaffirm that that sort of thing is not going to happen, that aesthetics would be the way to go, and that maintaining scenic Pacifica was the way to go. So that was one of my concerns. The other one was obviously hazards, and it seems to me that the document pretty much covers hazards very well as well. So, and there's a couple places in the document where they, they do protection of scenic Pacifica and aesthetics of the neighborhood and aesthetics in general, so I'm pleased with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neal?
I didn't have a.
Oh.
If you want me to make a motion, I'll make a motion.
Just asking for comments.
Why'd you turn mine off?
Councilmember Nyheart?
I just wanted to, you know, this whole issue of how rapidly changing this field is makes it very difficult for cities, and I appreciate your work on this. I really am very impressed with that. I was just stunned with the amount of questions that I could generate off of just this document, thinking about where things are in the future. As we get smaller and smaller devices, and we try to go in places like, since you mentioned Valamar, into the valley, you can get several structures, I mean, that would repeat and repeat up the sides and into areas, and I could see those being placed on houses. And so that's why I asked that question about that. And we, and I'm aesthetically, I agree with, with Mayor Protem. That's, that's where we want to focus, but I think it really has to be on a case-by-case basis, because I'm thinking about some of the streets, where, what structures would you, I mean, I guess it'd have to be sitting in the ground and something that they provided and, you know, there, my point being, there may be a time that being on a house is an appropriate thing. Yeah.
Well, there's nothing in the ordinance as it's proposed that would prohibit that. I thought you were going to lean the other way, where you would be inclined to prohibit certain types of installations. But as it's written, all of those.
Yeah.
Types of installations, whether they're facade-mounted, roof-mounted, ground-mounted, in R1, R1H, R2, et cetera, they're permitted, subject to a use permit in those cases.
And it is, as my second comment, I am appreciative also of the careful part around health and safety and those sorts of things, because federal law is pretty clear in this regard, and that doesn't enter our decision-making. So nor can it. So that's, that's really quite good. But I foresee these becoming small enough that we have them lots of places. So I, I, the challenge of keeping up with this is not small. So, thank you. And I'm ready.
Okay. So just one last comment. So I imagine that many, many cities throughout the state are making these same types of accommodations to their technology services, and they're very overlapping, I would imagine.
They are. I looked at a number of other cities. There's really not much consistency. I mean, that's the beauty of local control, if you look at it that way, where cities can tailor solutions to the political circumstances where they live, as well as the topography, built environment, and so forth. None of what we're proposing, in my opinion, is out of line with what other cities have done. Some are more restrictive, some are less restrictive, some don't have standards that speak explicitly to the rights of way.
Uh huh.
I think that's one thing that will set us apart and help not only carriers, but also the city implementing the regulations.
Great. I very much appreciate both Planning Commission's oversight and staff's oversight of this issue and, you know, just appreciate the job that you've done in looking at this ordinance. I think very well done.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neal?
I was just going to make the motion, if that's okay. There's two motions here. Can I just do them at one?
No, we need to do them.
Need to do separate? Okay. Move that the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica amending Article 26 Public Utilities Residential and Commercial Antennas of Chapter 4, zoning of Title IX, planning and zoning of the Pacifica Municipal Code be read by title only and that further reading be waived.
Okay.
And I'll second that, but I did have a comment, one last one. I totally second it, and I appreciate, again, the work. I just want to, if we put it on city polls and city things, we can potentially make money. I'm not opposed to that. That's number one. Number two, I also, when we think of aesthetics, those silly palm trees are not aesthetic, just so you know.
I understand.
The ones you see all over Southern California, just, I hope we're doing, we look for something a little better than that.
Sure. And there was some discussion to that effect of specifying you should.
Yeah, I don't know.
A pine tree, for example, and we thought that keeping it generic and allowing it to be discretionary.
Yeah.
Fit each situation better.
Exactly. It's going to depend on where you're at. Anyway, thank you.
I just, I kind of respond to Mary Ann. Actually, one of the lighting poles at IBL is an antenna.
Yeah, I think it's great.
For night games, yeah.
Nice.
Courtesy of either Sprint or Verizon, I forget which one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so please vote.
Should I do the second part now?
Sure.
Second motion is move the introduction of the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica amending Article 26 Public Utilities Residential and Commercial Antennas of Chapter 4, zoning of Title IX, planning and zoning of the Pacifica Municipal Code.
Councilmember Nyheart?
And I'll second that, too.
Okay. Please vote. And those both pass, five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to council communications. The purpose of council communications is for council members to inform each other of items of potential interest to other council members, such as inter-agency meetings. You want to start?
Sure.
Councilmember Nyheart?
Okay. There's been a number of things this month, but there's two I want to make sure. sure the council knows about. And the first of that is congratulations to Mayor Irvin, because she was appointed, elected, by the City and County Association of Governments to serve on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee of CCG. So, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying for that. The other thing I wanted to say about the CCG meeting, the City-County Association of Governments, which is our all-elected, that actually for San Mateo County, works very closely together to do much of the appropriations of the money that comes back to the county for transportation. And we received a presentation from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission about the pavement condition index. I will send a copy to that to our city manager, and you can distribute it. I had meant to bring it to you tonight, and then I thought electronic would be better, because maybe you'll even want to post it. The reason I suggest that the public take a look at it is because it looks, it really points to two issues, one of which is where we are in terms of streets and roads and condition across the county, but across the state, and that this is part of an aging infrastructure that is costing us more every single year. And this is particularly true because there have been projects that have come forward, and by time, start to finish, some of you recognize, like we just talked about Malagra. And Malagra isn't even completely funded and voted on, and all those things, it has to come back to its funding sources once design is done. So when we look at things like this, we have to think about the longevity of the time, and from start to finish, it's going to cost way more than what you thought of when you originally had the concept. We were really struck by construction costs right now are skyrocketing in terms of streets, roads, pavement. The other thing, we are not the worst in the county by any means, but we're, we do have significant issues in terms of streets that we took in as is from the county. And our largest problem is the fact that there are areas of town that if we're to do anything, we change the potential flow of water, because there are no gutters and curbs, there's no storm drains, there's no, and once you do that, if you pave the road in a certain way, it may shoot water into somebody's house that it didn't before. And on some of our hills, I think we don't understand why it is that our streets are the way they are in some parts of town. And even at that, we can't maintain the ones that are fully finished streets with curbs and gutters. So I will share that with council, and you can decide, but the total cost is really phenomenal for the state, and that's in there as well. So this is a hot issue with the state of California right now, trying to figure out how to fund this, because we really are not able to keep up with repairs. The other thing I wanted to tell you all about is the Redevelopment Successor Agency, MAT. We have only two more meetings here before it comes back to being managed by the county. And you have the reports, I'm sure you can see them, they're pretty much marching along as we, as, as it has been. There is no new news there. And I'm now chairing that meeting. So, there you go.
Thank you very much for that report. Mayor Protam, do you agree?
Just one last thing. I brought, for those of you that were interested in the presentation, and I only have one copy, so I'm going to give it to the city manager also. For the South San Francisco, the Measure A funds that were approved by the TA, in there is an example of how they put forward their presentations for approval, the drawings and the type of schematics that they use. And I'd just like to make sure that we take some look at that and think about it for the future. Thanks.
Mayor Protam, do you agree?
We were all attending the goal-setting on the weekend, which turned out to be a very excellent event. I was very happy to see the public and the staff and the city council be able to interact as well as we did, have that opportunity. I really appreciate that. We also heard from residents very concerned about homelessness, also about possible evictions at Pacific Skies, and our small businesses concerned about losing money with various signage issues. And aside from, we also talked about the shuttle, how, you know, having a shuttle is a wonderful thing, and we want better public transportation, especially on the coast, and that's going to take a lot more energy from all of us to make sure our ridership stays so that we can advocate for even more. Our Flex Shuttle is doing very well because of its ridership, so that needs a lot more study. Traffic congestion management, obviously, with the wonderful warm weather, regretting that there wasn't some rain, but nonetheless, people flock to the beaches, and we all felt it here. So it reminded us of the pumpkin festival in Half Moon Bay, where our fellow coastal folks stay home like they're hermits or go out of town. So during the pumpkin festival, however, our city manager got involved with various entities and made traffic through Pacifica on that weekend really rather smooth. I don't think we remember that hardship. So encouraging that we look into that and deal immediately with our traffic congestion issues, especially on very sunny days or some kind of an occasion. A good side of it is that some merchants in the center and north end of town realized that people turned off the roads, and some of our eateries actually stayed open much longer than normal because people decided to get out of line and discovered them. So there was one good side of that. I would like to suggest that we, we don't resign, what do we do? We adjourn in honor of Bill Bent. I don't know, Bill Bent, I guess he was getting, I mean, I saw him not too long ago, I think it was around Christmas time, and I guess his health went down, or to make things easier for him and his family, he moved with his family, but he did pass away. And Bill Bent has a long history of service to our economy and to our city in general. So if we could do that, that would be nice.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember O'Neill.
Basically, I was honored, once again, I think it's about the fifth or sixth year in a row of judging the American Legion Speech Contest. There was, one of the kids who was contestants was from Terranova, and what was really, what is really kind of cool is that several years ago, the national winner of the speech contest was from Terranova, and she received a $25,000 college scholarship. So they always try to encourage the locals to apply for that. I went to the congestion management meeting today, and it was rather interesting, as they were talking about the establishment of bus, express bus routes through El Camino, and that the cost and how express bus routes really aren't financially viable. The, if, let's say to downtown San Francisco, the reason is, is during rush hour, they can make one trip, and then it takes them over an hour to get back, and rush hour's over. So it's really very expensive to have the express buses that we used to have, and that's probably why they just took them over to Colma instead of, you know, actually downtown. And the cost of the capital, operating expenses, and everything else was kind of interesting. The Chamber of Commerce asked me to come and talk to them about the vacancy ordinance, or possible discussion of a vacancy ordinance. And then I also wanted to, John Keener and I are doing a town hall this Sunday, March 1st, from three to five at the Pedro Point Firehouse, and it's free to attend, no RSVP required. And you're, I just wanted to make that option available to anybody that might be interested in coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Keener.
Okay. So I attended the Emergency Preparedness Commission meeting, and I want to draw attention to one of their programs that, that I just learned about. It's called Map Your Neighborhood. And the program is to, to take ten or so of your neighbors in and map them in preparation for a disaster. You know, earthquake, a large fire, flood, et cetera. And you make a contact list, who's living in the house, any elderly people, kids, pets, you know, basically needs. And then on the other side of the equation, you make a note of any skills or equipment that would be useful in an emergency. So medical professionals, tools, et cetera. So this, this seems to be a means to account for people and to assist in the, in a time of emergency. And it comes with a handy booklet, and I've got one somewhere, but not right on me. The important thing that I would like to note is that the information is not sent anywhere else. It just stays in the neighborhood, you know, with, with however you decide to, to self-organize. The point person is Breck Hitz, and he will help anyone who wants to knock on doors and introduce the, the program. His email is H I T Z B at PacificaPolice.org, or you can email me on the, on the council page of the city website, and I'll put you in touch with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those reports. Okay, and for myself, I attended the Legislative Committee meeting. One interesting thing that we discussed was that under the new water bond recently approved, we're going to be competing for stormwater funding. And interestingly enough, under that water bond, we have to develop a stormwater resource plan, and, you know, it points to the problem that we have, and we have very limited resources. So it always ends up that the cities that tend to need these resources the most have the most difficult time applying for these grants, because they require so much manpower and the resources that, you know, many of these cities struggle to find time to do. So I thought that was a really interesting issue that we talked about. Moving forward, we're trying to get help with how to, you know, find the, the time and resources to apply for the many grants that so many of the cities in that area need. We also approved our legislative policies and priorities and positions, and we received a legislative update, so that was very informative. And as Councilmember Nyheart said, that I was selected to the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'm very honored to have been appointed by the CCG Board of Directors, and I'm very much looking forward to serving and to being at my first meeting on Thursday, the 26th, with Councilmember Nyheart, after anyway. Let's see, I also was invited to join Courtney Conlin from the chamber on a tour of the Crespe Business Center by Joe Erasme. He is the owner there. And that was a great experience. I met many of the local businesses there, and people seemed to be doing great. He has a zero vacancy rate over in the Crespe Business Center, and he was just really pointing out to me the strong need that we have in Pacifica for commercial businesses. It's a little more difficult to get, to fill vacancies for retail and office space than it is for commercial-type businesses, and they hire, I think, over 125 people in that center. Many of those jobs are for the youth in the city, so I really was well-educated by going on that tour, and I very much appreciated seeing how well they're doing over there. And also on Friday, I carried out my first mayor's walk with the city manager, Lori Tenfo, our chief of police, Joe Spanheimer, Ray Beagini from Public Works, and Jane Northrip from the Tribune. And we went around to all the businesses, and people told us great stories. And what we were really struck by is the fact that people seem to be doing quite well there. They're happy, the business has improved a great deal, there's much more foot traffic than used to be in Eureka Square. So we were very pleased to see that, that area seems to be thriving, and hopefully it will continue to do so, and we'll get any of the remaining vacancies filled. And again, very informational for me to be on these walks, and I look forward to doing many more, and I'm very appreciative that the staff took out time during their day to accompany me and provide answers to questions that many of the business owners had. So that was, you know, I really enjoyed participating in that. Let's see, I also attended an Economic Development Committee meeting. We're trying to get things together, creating a couple subcommittees to address certain issues in Pacifica. One of the issues, of course, is something I just talked about. We've been talking about a lot lately, is the commercial vacancies within the city, so that's one of the subcommittees, and there's a variety of other ones. We're putting people together and looking forward to having the economic development manager come soon to the city and work with the economic development team, and really start moving and trying to get some of these concerns addressed going forward. And as Mayor Protam de Gruy pointed out, we had a goal-setting session, and that was very useful, and, and we accomplished quite a great deal. And part of the reason I think we accomplished so much is we really worked very closely with staff to develop some of our ideas for goals. And we're not done yet. We put down a lot of the ideas. The staff's going to be working with those ideas. We have some objectives of how to achieve those goals. I know Jane Northrip wrote an article for the Tribune, so the public will be hearing about it very shortly. And we also really want to encourage input from the public in terms of what they think about our goal-setting session, and so that will be coming out very shortly. And I did want to also thank Mayor Protam for acknowledging Bill Bent. I actually served with Bill on the Finance, City Services Finance Committee for many, many years, and he was just an absolute gem of a human being, and it very much saddens me to know that he's no longer with us, and I'll be happy to adjourn the meeting on, on his behalf. I also, I just have to say, I also, this past two weeks, lost my father-in-law. He was a World War II veteran. He died on his, we had his 90th birthday party, and he went to bed that night, and he fell asleep, and he was just an amazing human being. And I also just want to acknowledge him, and hard to lose those people that have given so much to our community and to our lives. So thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Next, we're going to hit oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title 2, Chapter 1, Section 2-1, Point 118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the direction of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the coun, barred from further audience before the council during the meeting. Okay. I have some cards, so I have one card for oral communications right now, and that's from Roger Medler.
Wow, what a surprise. All right, a town meeting, that sounds good. I like that. I've been waiting for that for a long time. Anyway, I don't know what happened to Teresa, but I hope she's okay. I don't think she's ever missed a meeting. Okay. So anyway, I went to the Democratic meeting with Kevin Mullins, and he said there's a low voter turnout for the last election, and it seems to be there's a low turnout for the city council, too. So anyway, he can't get people to vote. Anyway, he, maybe if he cleaned up his act, you know, people might get to vote. San Mateo is known as being the most corrupt county in California. You got to vote for the best or the worst. I wonder why people don't vote. So I wrote three letters to Kevin Mullins. So, I wrote three letters to Kevin Mullins, and all he did is keep giving me the run-around, run-around, run-around. And he even told me it's not in his jurisdiction. He doesn't know that Pacifica's in his jurisdiction. So, that did no good. So, I wonder why you don't get votes, huh? So, anyway, I went to the code enforcement, I wrote a complaint to the code enforcement. I got no reply from that yet. I like to talk about the junk cars behind my house and the motorhome that's blocking my ocean view for the last four months. They probably can never get moved. Anyway, I'm getting no reply from him. I'd probably better ask to go to Leland Yee and shrimp boy Choi. Anyway, anyway, we're here. Speaking of junk, I don't know if you guys ever go by 850 Palmetto? They're running a junkyard out of there. We've talked about this three times. Remember, Sue? How to go there? Well, last night, I won't drive. They got lights and everything else back there. Three, I think, maybe, let's say, two. Two trailer loads full of junk. I mean, they're working at night. I might work in some overtime, you know? This is our parking lot. It's getting a little disgusting. I mean, when you drive by, can't you just stop and say, hey, man, what are you guys doing? Or call the police when you go? Don't they all, they got this thing called cellphone? Anyway, I hope to see some improvements with that. So, I was thinking, maybe you should just put in some meters there and some floodlights for them, you know, make it more convenient, or charge them some money, like we do down in Lynnamar. So, anyway, you know how it is with people. They don't care unless it's right next to their house, and then it's, oh, my, please help me. Anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Okay. Do I have any other comments? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those comments, and that is going to bring us to considerations. We'll start with Item 5, Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Article 11, Section 4-7, 1112, and 4, 7, 1114 to Title IV, Chapter 7 of the Pacifica Municipal Code Concerning Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Protam, council members, and city staff. I'm Acting Chief Joe Spanheimer with the Pacifica Police Department. On November 24th, 2014, staff came to the Council presenting issues surrounding the parking of recreational vehicles and trailers and seeking direction on action. It was the attention garnered by one particular recreational vehicle that brought this matter to the Council's attention. Staff advised that over the course of a year, the Police Department received a variety of calls for service regarding suspicious vehicles, abandoned vehicles, and trailers. To illustrate that point, I, in November, demonstrated that between November 1st, 2013, and November 13th, 2014, 350 vehicles reported as being suspicious, and the Pacifica Police Department issued 39 citations. Of those, 38 were for trailers parked over 12 hours, and just one was issued for a vehicle being occupied between the prohibited hours of 10:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning. Since that report, two more citations were issued for occupying of a vehicle between the hours of 10:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning. After reviewing the current Pacifica Municipal Codes concerning stopping, standing, and parking, staff has determined that the current prohibitions on using vehicles for human habitation and parking trailers unattached to motor vehicles contain qualifications that complicate enforcement, and that amendments to remove these qualifications would allow for improved enforcement. In the case of the recreational vehicle that brought this matter to the attention of the Council and the public, Police Department employees attempted to work with that vehicle's owner to bring him into compliance with existing laws. As no proof of occupancy could be established, this enforcement effort proved ineffective. Eventually, the department worked with local service providers in their effort to provide alternate legal parking locations, and a semi-permanent solution was found, and the recreational vehicle that brought this matter to the forefront is now legally parked. For months, city staff has worked with local service providers and core agencies on finding alternative parking solutions for those people who have no other housing than inside their own motor vehicles. While stakeholders, including city staff, continue to work to develop a plan and secure funding for a safe parking type of program, viable enforcement tools are needed. Section 4-7.1114 of the Pacifica Municipal Code prohibits occupancy of vehicles, campers, and trailers for human habitation on public property between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Enforcement of this section can be difficult. In the case of RVs, taller vehicles do not afford officers the opportunity to see inside. And without indications of occupancy, such as sound, light, personal contact with the occupants, officers, excuse me, are not able to prove violations and therefore issue citations. And in the enforcement of this particular municipal code, personal contact is required as the citation is issued to the person actually occupying the vehicle instead of just merely a parking ticket stuck on the windshield. These citations are then processed through the Superior Court of the County of San Mateo Traffic Division, and the total fine amounts for these violations can range from $238 up to roughly $900 for subsequent violations. Now, those fines include various fees and assessments from the county and the state. However, those particular fines should be high enough to discourage the illegal activity. But the fact is, the people can essentially hide inside their vehicles during an eight-hour restricted period of time, and enforcement is made difficult. I do want to add that the base fine for that citation is $35, according to the Superior Court Traffic Division clerk. The Pacifica Municipal Code does not place any other restrictions on the parking of recreational vehicles, campers, remote homes, and public property, other than the 72-hour rule that applies to all vehicles. If a recreational vehicle were to remain in place for 72 hours or longer after being marked by the Police Department, it could be towed. With specific regards to trailers, Pacifica Municipal Code Section 4-7.1112 prohibits parking of trailers on public streets for more than 12 hours at a time. By allowing trailers to be parked for 12 hours at a time, enforcement can be difficult. Officers from various shifts must coordinate to mark and then cite the trailers, and in the meantime, or, excuse me, trailers are able to remain legally parked and unattended in both commercial and residential areas. Regarding recommended changes with respect to prohibition on using vehicles for human habitation, staff recommends amending Section 4-7.1114 of the Pacifica Municipal Code to remove the language outlining time restrictions on the occupancy of vehicles between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., allowing the enforcement of the vehicle, of the, excuse me, of the code prohibiting occupancy of vehicles for the purpose of habitation at any time of day. In this manner, enforcement can be done more effectively at any time when occupancy is observed, such as the drawing of blinds, the deployment of hydraulic stabilizers, cooking, running of generators, et cetera. The amendment staff is proposing to seek to more effectively address the problem of RV and trailer parking while being sensitive to the effect that any regulation could have on homeless population and recreational vehicle owners who are not living in their vehicles. With all this in mind, police will partner with local service providers, core agencies as well, to make sure that implementation of any amended ordinances are empathetic and thorough. Recognizing the sensitivity of this issue, the proposed ordinance will be accompanied by an enforcement procedure based on outreach, social service, and in an incremental enforcement approach. Staff is aware that for many individuals living in vehicles, there may be extenuating economic, mental, or physical health issues that are difficult to overcome and that may be best addressed by one or more of the local service providers. The proposed implementation plan would be, first, to have personal outreach to known vehicle dwellers and connect them with local service providers, allow for 30 days of education, outreach, and transition with warnings given during that time. And police response would be mainly two complaints with citations issued only as needed, as is the current practice. Recreational vehicles, excuse me, recreational vehicle owners who do not reside inside their vehicles but merely park them on the street would need to continue to abide by the existing 72-hour parking rules. The approach that staff is advocating is consistent with the approach taken in several other cities within San Mateo County. The cities in San Mateo County that restrict occupancy of vehicles for the purpose of habitation include Atherton, Burlingame, Foster City, Redwood City, San Carlos, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. I should mention, the city of South San Francisco does make allowances for parking and occupancy for the alleviation of sickness or temporary inability to operate a motor vehicle. With respect to the prohibition of parking of trailers on the public right-of-way, staff recommends amending Section 4-7.1112 of the Pacifica Municipal Code to mandate that trailers must be attached to a vehicle when in the public right-of-way, in addition to the current requirement that trailers may not be parked in the right-of-way for more than 12 hours in any one day. This amendment would aid officers in taking enforcement action regarding trailers parked Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Do I have questions from council? Mayor Protam DeGree?
If I'm hearing this correctly, so, if there's a situation of homelessness, for example, extenuating circumstances, we're referring them to agencies, right? But we still have that within 12 hours or 30 days, you have to be out of there? Is that correct? 30 days, doing the incremental approach?
What the intent would be during, assume this, the hour restrictions would be removed. We would first implement outreach. I'm part of the Steering Committee on the homelessness outreach team. We have one officer who goes through and is part of the meetings and has actually participated in the homeless count. We would provide outreach to those people who we know that live in vehicles, educate them about the ordinance, and make sure they're connected with services if they want to do so.
Okay, so I guess that's where I'm a little bit stuck. So, I know that we have incredible services, especially through the Pacifica Resource Center. I guess what I'm a little concerned about is that homelessness and those on the verge of homelessness is multiplying daily, that I'm concerned that there won't be services available, that those service agencies will find themselves with their hands somewhat tied, and the 30 days upon the individuals, and then what? So, that's my question. You don't need to answer that right now. That's just what's roaming around in my head right now.
If I may, I can attempt to try to clarify this. So, again, we would do an initial period of education, but whether this ordinance is amended or not, we have people living in vehicles right now. We've had vehicles living in that one-year period that I reported on, where we had, you know, 350 calls for service, yet only one citation issued. You know, I believe we've had a slight decrease in people living in vehicles this year, but, you know, maybe someone else can clarify that if they speak later. But the bottom line is, if there is somebody who we can steer towards resources and assist them in getting them off the street, you know, we're not going to give them a citation. As is mentioned by some people, there are, in this case of this ordinance being brought forward, there was one person essentially who brought this issue to the forefront. And what staff is looking for is more effective ways to deal with recurring situations, you know, where just we're not able to guide these people to services, and they refuse to cooperate with both law enforcement, and maybe this would help steer them towards services if we have more enforcement available to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Nyheart?
So, South San Francisco has alleviation of sickness or temporary inability to drive. So, basically, where does it fit that you pull over to the side of the road, and you're just too exhausted to drive, you take a nap? I mean, how do you determine? This is what I'm asking is, how do you determine? It's still, I just, I'm having trouble with the preciseness of it. I don't know that it's, how do you determine how long? I know you can look at the car, but some cars are absolutely messy to begin with, you know? I'm thinking about people working at the VA that I happen to see their cars, and how do you know when somebody's living in it, not living in it, you know, that kind of thing?
Right. It's, to try to answer your question, it's hard to really be really precise with this amendment and give, with any, and with South Cities, and to be too specific. What we count on is our officers to look at the totality of circumstances and make sound judgments. As it applies right now, you can't occupy a vehicle between 10:00 and 6:00 a.m. You can't sleep in it. Yet, you know, I've encountered people in our beach parking lot, you know, years ago, and they simply did the wise thing. They pulled off the road, and they slept in the vehicle. And so, you have to look at that and look at the circumstances, weigh public safety, weigh their safety. You can issue a warning citation, or you could actually issue a citation. But again, in most circumstances that officers have encountered over that one-year period that I mentioned, only one citation was issued.
So, I get the clarity about, you know, after dark, being able to see in a vehicle. I mean, somebody can go to bed before 10:00, and you can't tell. I get that. But I just want us to be fair with people about that issue that I just discussed. And then the other one, I take a little different approach on the trailers, because, you know, on this block, there might be a trailer that has a very, very large item on it, and it's hooked up to a truck that couldn't possibly pull it. So, at which, you know, how do, even that doesn't do it. I mean, I know you can make these things as precise as you can, but even, how do you make those determinations? It's technically complying.
Technically, as long as it doesn't remain in one place for more than 72 hours, it's a unit. However, we would, with the amendment, it couldn't be, even though it's parked and attached to a vehicle, in place more than 12 hours. That's what the amendment would hopefully help us enforce. You know, one of the things that we are looking at is, for example, let's say someone uses a trailer to advertise a business, and they come to work at 8:00 a.m., and they hook that trailer up to their vehicle, and they park it where they're going to get a lot of visibility in a business district, and they drop it off unattached at 8:30. They go to work. 5:00 in the afternoon or evening rolls around. They go, and they pick it up. Right now, as it stands, it's no violation. Yet, it, you know, could be a hazard for people trying to get around it, see around it, walk around it. So, but it's legal. Right now, we don't have any tools to address that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Keener?
So, again, on the trailers part of this, so, the current law is 12 hours for a trailer that is unattached, right?
Yes.
And you want to make it eight hours, I think. Is that right?
The proposal is that it would also have to be attached to a vehicle.
Ah, okay, okay. So, I know in my neighborhood, there's, just on my block, well, I shouldn't say this, but there's two, there's two trailers that are quite often parked on the street. And as far as I know, they've never been ticketed. And, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call in a complaint on them. And in general, this part of the ordinance, either the old ordinance or the proposed new ordinance, is complaint-driven, is it not?
The, with regard to trailers...
The, with regard to trailers, we typically, it is a, you know, it can be a call for service, it can be complaint-driven, and if so, we will, we will address it, we will respond. In general, regarding our calls for service staffing levels, it is in general a low priority for officers to go out and enview those types of matters. You know, what I would suggest, if people have complaints about trailers, you know, they can be anonymous, they can call those things in, we can, we can, you know, attempt to rectify the situation. More often than not, officers will run the plates on trailers or vehicles that are abandoned, and try to contact the registered owner, and verbally advise them of the rules, and try to gain compliance, have them move the trailer before they're actually ticketed.
Yeah, yeah. So with the laws that stands now, you've pointed out that officers, you know, there's overlap between shifts, but is that actually the case, or do you, you know, mark the tires or whatever, and then maybe come back 24 hours later or something?
That's a good question. More often than not, it'll be a, it'll either be a nighttime graveyard officer who will mark it very early in the morning, and indicate the time it was marked, and they will generally, as they get off duty within, you know, shortly afterwards, they will have to communicate the trailer's location and the fact that it's been marked. And, you know, hopefully, the day shift officer, you know, come when 12 hours rolls around, will have the opportunity to go back by and mark it. That may or may not be the case, and oftentimes, it'll be that same officer 24 hours later coming back. So it's all a matter of really timing, availability, and calls for service.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselmember O'Neill?
So when you talk of trailers, you're talking about like, commercial trailers where there's, you know, backhoe or something on it, as well as like, Good Sam Club trailers, correct? Or, because I, when I read the ordinance, I didn't see any differentiation, it was just how the, a trailer had to be connected to a vehicle.
That's correct. There's no differentiation between a boat trailer, a large cargo trailer, a small toy hauler-type trailer.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask that question. And then, kind of responding to Mayor Protem's degree, I saw that you had 350 vehicles were reported as being suspicious, and of the 350, 38 citations were issued. And so I just kind of figured out, and one was for a person occupied vehicle on public property, that's like .002 percent. So I think the police are being fairly liberal in their interpretation of when to, because I know when I was talking with Anita from the Resource Center, she said that the count, I think it was in 2012, there was 150 people spending the night in cars here in Pacifica. And I think, you know, we're being fairly lenient or understanding if we have a citation rate of .002 percent. And then the rest, the other 37, I guess, were for trailers, correct?
That's-
And then I do know that the Resource Center is applying for some money for, to kind of deal with this situation, and maybe look at a parking solution that's down in Santa Barbara, if I remember correctly. So I just wanted to clarify that about the commercials, and that I think they're being fairly, the cops are being pretty tolerant and, you know, not real aggressive in dealing with the situation. I don't mean that as a, you know what I mean, more of as a compliment than a detriment.
So is that something that I missed? So that what Councilman O'Neill is saying is that, in your discretion, when you did those 300s, you were scrutinizing, and those that were like, being bad neighbors got their citations, and those that maybe were needing empathetic attention for human reasons, was why the number was so low? Because I originally thought the number was low because amazingly, there weren't people living in things?
Right. The 300 was simply calls for service, whether it's a citizen saying that, yes, there's an occupied vehicle here at this location, or just somebody saying, hey, it's suspicious, it's new to my neighborhood, go check it out. And those calls for service were between the prohibited hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. So officers responded to those, on those incidents. It may have been an empty vehicle by the time the officer arrived, or if it was still occupied, officers made contact, if they were able, and then used their discretion and enforcement of whatever laws pertain to what was going on at the time. In just one instance, was a person actually cited for occupying a vehicle between those prohibited hours, according to the current municipal code?
So that's my question, was there really only one where there was occupancy, or there was one, were there others that were in need, but this particular one was a not-nice person?
I would have to do more research, I'd have to look at every, each of the 350 incidents.
Looking for clarity, all right, thank you.
I had a question about an ordinance. I remember being told last year that there was an ordinance prohibiting sleeping in cars in LA last year, and the Ninth Court of Appeals struck that down, saying basically, it's giving people the opportunity to discriminate against the poor. So can you comment on that, and where that stands right now, and how that would affect this ordinance?
Right. No, I'm aware of the ordinance, and the ordinance was brought to the attention of our city attorney's office, and it was reviewed, I believe, by Matthew Vysick of the city attorney's office. And there's a, there's a large difference between the municipal code or the statute in Los Angeles or LA County and ours. Theirs was very, very broad.
Okay.
From what I remember, as far as the, the level of, with the evidence, what an officer has to see to determine occupancy, could have been simply a food container in the car, that would authorize those officers to establish, you know, occupancy or habitation of a vehicle, and therefore, it is overly broad.
Okay.
Ours is more specific, and per the city attorney's office, it is enforceable.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I just want to say that I appreciate the aspect of this that is potentially helping and advocating for the homeless, and providing, you know, working and getting them connected with core agencies that could potentially get them help sooner than they would have otherwise gotten it. And you're dealing with these core agencies, for instance, in the last situation that we had, did we get, do you feel like there's support from these core agencies to do what we're doing, and the way it's being handled currently, and would be supportive of such an ordinance that we're considering? I know you can't put, I know you can't, but you tell me what somebody else might think, but just give it your best go.
No, Mayor, that's a great question. And actually, I've, we've met, I've met with the Resource Center and other groups, and I think we have an understanding, and we'll probably agree to disagree a little bit.
Okay.
Staff feels, we just need a little bit more enforcement tool. But what we also want to do is, we want to reach a happy middle ground, and we're actively working with the Resource Center and the homeless outreach team. You know, an officer went with, went with them on the count.
Right.
As an observer, plainclothes, just to see, you know, what's going on so we could better educate ourselves. And so I've been discussing this whole matter with Anita Reese of the Resource Center, and we're trying to work, Councilmember O'Neill mentioned, there's a safe parking program. There's one in, I think, Santa Barbara, I've been speaking with people up in Santa Rosa, they have one in Sonoma County. So I understand that the Resource Center has applied for measure A funds, and the county is going out with a request for a proposal regarding that matter, and we're not sure exactly what's going to happen, but, you know, I can't speak for the city at this point in time, but-
Right, I understand.
You know, I think it, you know, what they're doing is a good cause, and is probably on the right track, and we'd like to be a part of what happens from here on going out.
Great, thank you very much for that. Does anybody else have any questions they would like to ask?
No, I have comments.
Okay, and then, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public, and I have several cards on this issue. And the first card I have is from Monica Olson, followed by Anita Reese, and then Barbara Urbacher. And then I'll bring it up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak about this. I do oppose the ordinance. I think our laws reflect our values, and it seems a little preemptory at this point, especially given the fact that we're seeing such a tragedy with losing teachers because of the starting salary being so low for the grade schools, and the rentals are going up. We're just turning our back, or making, being poor illegal. And I've worked a long time trying to get an affordable housing ordinance, and I'm sorry that the developers managed to defeat that. And it just seems like we're rushing in with a law that reflects a certain hardness in all of, it reflects on all of us, and I'm sad about this. I own a home, but I wouldn't be able to own a home right now if I, you know, had the salary I had when I, anyhow, it's just, it's just an unfair world right now for people who end up being homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Anita Reese?
Anita Reese of the Pacifica Resource Center. So I want to say that by changing the code to make it illegal to sleep in your vehicle at any time of the day, you're basically telling folks that if you're fortunate enough to keep and have a vehicle after you've lost your housing, you're not allowed here. And like Monica said, the laws, like the budget, should reflect the values of the community. This law, in my opinion, does target homeless Pacificans who are vehiculately housed, and makes it even more difficult for them to get ahead so that they can find housing. They're not trying to upset their traditionally housed neighbors, they are trying to stay under the radar, for the most part, to get some sleep, to get up early the next morning, and go to or look for work, then do it all again the next day. One example is a young man who came to the Pacifica Resource Center after he and his father lost his home, their housing. I'm not sure if they lost it to an eviction or to foreclosure, but his father moved out of the area, but he couldn't go with him. He had a job and was a student at Skyline. He slept in his car, and went to school early to shower in the morning, in the gym, then went to classes and to work, and he couldn't find or afford a place of his own. In my opinion, this ordinance, if this ordinance passes, you're telling this young man and many others that they cannot be here. This young man could have been any one of us. So I strongly encourage you to find another solution to reduce the number of vehiculally housed in Pacifica by investing in programs like the safe parking program or something else to support them, and not penalize them for trying to find a safe place to sleep. So I will make a comment, too, just to say that the police department has been amazing working with us often. So it's to no fault of their own, I mean, I don't fault them, and just like the chief said, you know, we agree to disagree. You know, he asked, how long do we want to give the education part? I said, forever, you know, because I think that it should be more than 30 days. I think that working together, we can maybe make a difference by talking to folks and trying to connect them to services together. So maybe that's where we work, instead of citing folks and making it more and more difficult for them to stay here. And I did want to comment that I brought copies of the homeless in Pacifica report, because there has been a decrease in the number of vehiculally housed in Pacifica from the last time, which was in 2013 and 2015, but those numbers haven't been released yet. I just know that there has been, in the hard numbers, a decrease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Urbacher, followed by Delia McGrath, and Ellen Hay, and Gloria Stephan.
Hello, members of the council, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Police Chief, and Lori. I appreciate the sensitive language used in the staff report regarding collaboration with social services and interest groups in trying to help our people who are housed in their vehicles. But a safe parking problem, similar to those in Santa Rosa and Santa Barbara with wraparound social services, could help alleviate some of the stress on people who are forced to live in their vehicles. In fact, we understand that Santa Rosa went so far as to repeal their ordinance which forbids sleeping in vehicles. This amendment was initiated in response to a particular problem which has since been alleviated. Why do we need an ordinance which further burdens our people who have no place but their vehicles to live? I'm concerned that stricter enforcement will affect people who are causing no problems or nuisances by simply sleeping. Many of them go to jobs during the day. And it may be unrealistic to expect that even with social services assistance, housing cannot be found, especially in 30 days, considering the scarcity of affordable units in our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Delia McGrath?
Good evening, council and mayor and everyone here, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Delia McGrath, and so I wanted to give a little context as to why I do not want this ordinance to be part of our city codes. I'm using the very recent release of a report called California's New Vagrancy Laws that was researched by UC Berkeley Law students in their advocacy clinic. And the subtitle of this report is "The Growing Enactment and Enforcement of Anti-Homless Laws in the Golden State." And so I just want to read a few portions from it. First of all, the acknowledgement that homelessness is a persistent and growing crisis in California. And in this report, there are findings from, about the enactment and enforcement of municipal codes that criminalize homelessness in California. And I'm really fearful that this is the beginning of that slippery slope here in Pacifica. That would break my heart. I love this city, I want it to be a compassionate city, one that has creative responses to issues, and as Chief Spanheimer's report indicated, the original intention of creating such proposal by one individual, that has been resolved. And so it seems a lot like overkill to now establish an ordinance that would affect the whole city, no matter what the situation is. The other thing I wanted to, I've got lots, lots of different things to quote here, and I see my time is running out, but I did want, I heard Mayor Irvin speak about the LA, you know, situation, and that is specifically addressed in this report as well. It says, "Challenges to laws criminalizing homelessness on the grounds of arbitrary enforcement have gained some traction in recent years," and it quotes the June 2014 LA municipal code that prohibited people from using a vehicle parked or standing as living quarters. The court held that the code was unconstitutionally vague- The court held that the code was unconstitutionally vague and violated the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. And the way that... And it says that many municipal codes have yet to be challenged, perhaps because the people these laws target are among the least likely members of society to use legal assistance. But there is a warning that other municipal codes could be vulnerable.
Thank you very much for those comments. Ellen Haig?
Good evening. My name's Ellen Haig. I'm a resident of Pacifica and a member of SFOP PIA, formerly known as PIA. I'm concerned about the ordinance being proposed that will limit the use of motor vehicles for human habitation. I oppose this as a solution for people that are in the unfortunate situation of needing to live in their vehicles. If this ordinance is adopted, it may very well open the city to a lawsuit unless it is going to be implemented across the board for every vehicle in Pacifica. This ordinance criminalizes people, in my opinion, that are homeless and makes no sense to me when there is a much better solution, such as the Safe Parking Program. Santa Barbara and other communities have successfully implemented a Safe Parking Program that allows people living in their vehicles a safe place to park. In January, I volunteered to help with the homeless count in Pacifica. I would ask you, do you see a homeless person as just some anonymous man or woman sleeping in the bushes or in his vehicle? When I chatted with the pastor of my church today, he said, "What if that person was your son or your daughter, your brother or your sister? Would you see things differently?" I appreciate an effort that's been made in the drafting of this ordinance to address the needs of people living in their vehicles, but I oppose adopting this ordinance as a solution. I hope that the city of Pacifica will be a city that has a heart and has compassion for people living on the margins. I urge you to vote against the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gloria Stephan?
Good evening. My name's Gloria Stephan. I'm really impressed by the previous speakers there. They've really said quite a bit, and so I will keep it short. I do want to say that I appreciate how the report, the summary report, was, to me, a little more sensitive than I expected. I liked the idea of the partnership issue, and I think that really needs to be emphasized. And if this passes, which I feel like the others, that my concern is that there's another layer of penalties on someone who's already down on their luck. Where are they going to go? Are they going to go back on the street? Well, I shouldn't say back, but are they going to go on the street? Then we have another major issue. If there's a way of taking care of them in providing social services, this will definitely help us. Do we really need another ordinance that penalizes people? Lives can be saved while homes are found. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have one more card for Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, council. Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick. I first wanted to say I agree wholeheartedly with everything that's been said, and I wanted to bring a very slightly different perspective from an entirely selfish place as an incredibly privileged white male living in the community, as somebody who, on a day off from work, just enjoys a pleasure cruise, going wherever, spending a few bucks on a very large satisfying meal, and exploring wherever. I find it personally very satisfying to find a nice place where I'm not harming anybody and enjoy a nap in the sunshine in the comfort of my car. So it also makes me nervous as somebody who's giving money to the community and just enjoying a day off that perhaps for doing absolutely nothing at all but digesting my meal in the sunlight, I also could perhaps be disturbed. You know, what strikes me is if there is no crime very clearly being committed, if nobody is being put out in a substantial way, why do we need a law? If there's a genuine harm, a threat that is occurring, I dare even say regularly, absolutely. But if no harm is being done, if there's a problem that needs to be addressed, you know, if there are people who need help, not more harassment, that seems to be a large concern this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any more cards on this issue, so nobody else wants to speak. I will bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Nyhart?
I had issues about bringing this forward because what was presented to us was a unique situation, and solving a situation with a new ordinance is never my first option. But with that said, I've gone back and forth as whether I want to share this or not, but what the heck, I'm coming off a great goal study session meeting, and, right, we're all about being honest and integrity and all that good stuff. You want to know about people that live in their car? You're looking at one. I lived there for six months. I was, gosh, 19, 20, in between things. I can tell you the biggest concern I had was safety. I wasn't safe. It was a bit of a frightening situation to be in. I can tell you also that it is... This was in Iowa. I was in college. There's a variety of reasons. I didn't have money. It's either tuition or rent. I wanted my education. You know that thing. I had literally a clothes rack that hung across the back. I had a stick shift, so I couldn't sleep in the front. So I had to sleep under the clothes across the back bench seat. It was real fun. I mean, I took showers at all kinds of places. It was one of the more interesting periods of time in my life. And I have to tell you that there are all kinds of reasons that people end up. But that, my experience, is not a reason to make a law either or not make a law. It isn't. It's an issue of we had a particular situation. And is it my understanding, and I want to go back to our law as it currently stands, is it, at this point in time, legal to live in your vehicle on the street? I'm asking the chief.
It's not legal per the municipal code to occupy for the purposes of habitation. I think it says either permanent and temporary. Let me turn to it.
So this is not something that is new in our city and got hashed out a long time ago. So we're not passing a new... The idea, the concept, is not new.
Right. Human habitation is defined as the intentional establishment of a temporary or permanent place of human occupancy for the purposes of overnight lodging or camping.
So what you're really doing is making it easier to determine whether our existing code is applicable or not in a given situation.
I am asking that the current municipal code be amended to make it easier for certain enforcement. Yes, the example of the young man sleeping in his vehicle before going to school, it's currently illegal. The amendment would make it any more illegal unless it's between certain hours. And it's the spirit of the law is intended not to seek out people like that.
Yeah. I just want to say I really appreciate what you did in the given situation that brought this whole messy topic up that doesn't have really good answers. And I'm really appreciative that you worked with the Resource Center and found a place. And I hope that we can do that in each and every time that becomes that kind of a situation. By the same token, I've also been on the other side of stopping into beach parking in Southern California and being roused from just taking a little dose. So I've been on that side, too, and I hope we don't become quite that nasty. All right. On the other side, was there any consideration to simply making it after dark so you could see lights?
Not really. What we're looking at, and again, I guess the primary person who brought this to the forefront was very knowledgeable of the rules, what they can and cannot do. So, you know, drawing blinds, not using lights, putting certain fabrics that are light impermeable over your windows would be something that could use to flaunt this law, go around it.
But if we don't implement this, nothing changes. Okay.
Correct. Our hands are still somewhat tied in certain aspects of the enforcement.
By the same token, I'm all about the trailer part of this. Okay. I don't know.
Councilmember O'Neil?
I will repeat what Councilmember Nyhart said, is the commercial trailer part I really don't have a problem with. Okay? So I'm specifically looking at the human habitation overnight. So again, getting back to the staff report, it says there were 350 vehicles were reported as being suspicious. Can you define what suspicious is or was, or if you know, or just a generalization?
Councilmember, that would be somewhat hard to define. That's in the eye of the beholder, the caller who reports it. Whether there's a vehicle that is in their neighborhood in front of their house that they've never seen before, or whether it's a vehicle they know and somebody's doing something in it, whatever appears suspicious to them causes them to report it to us. So, you know, sometimes we will, on view, an officer driving around will see, you know, activity inside a vehicle after darkness. That would be a suspicious vehicle to that officer based on the circumstances. So it's really hard to describe what the exact activity is that would be suspicious, but it could fall within the realm which I just described.
So another factor that's different, if I remember correctly from the meeting on November 24th, when a citation is issued, as now, the citation is issued to a vehicle, right? If the ordinance is amended, it's issued to an individual, a person?
As it stands now, the citation is issued to the person.
Oh, it's issued to the person, so I misunderstood the vehicle?
Yeah. For most parking-related municipal codes that I'm aware of, it's issued to a vehicle. You write the ticket. It gets placed under the windshield. Registered owner needs to take care of it. In this instance, occupying a vehicle, the citation is given to the person occupying the vehicle. So therefore, we have to make physical contact with that person, and they have to actually issue the citation in a hand-to-hand transaction. We can't just simply stick it on the windshield and all day.
And that's the present ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir.
But being the person... But the case that's brought this forward, being that person hid the lights, never opened the door, put a muzzle on the dog and everything, in that case, it was just being issued to the vehicle? Was it... Do we ever cite him or her?
That person may have been cited for other issues, but that I'm not aware of. However, when we did our research in the computer looking for the specific section, I don't believe that person was actually cited.
Okay.
Other vehicles were, but not that one particular one.
Okay, okay. So then, going down the road, if they were to get cited, okay, and this is a person, 90% or 95% of them are down on their luck, lost their house, lost their job, they're having mental issues, drug issues, whatever, then if they don't appear in court, then there's a warrant out for them, correct? And so then they just keep getting further into the system and becoming... The hole keeps getting bigger for them, correct?
Yeah. If they're issued a citation with a court date, they fail to appear or, you know, take care of their ticket, just simply pay it, there would be a warrant for their arrest. However, it's for an infraction. It would be a very small amount. If the person is cited again for the same violation, the fine amount would increase. I believe around $600 is the second offense for Pacifica municipal code infraction. A third offense, if they continue to do that, would increase up to, I believe, $900 or somewhere in that neighborhood. If they continue to fail to appear, yeah, there would be warrants. However, these are based on infractions, so they probably would not rise to the amount that an officer would actually be taking that person to jail.
Okay. But it's $900, not total. It's ramping up with each ticket, right? So $900 plus $600 plus $250 is, what, $1,700 is what they owe the state?
Yeah. They increase incrementally, so the first citation would amount to roughly $238 in total.
So instead of throwing them a lifeline, we're kind of throwing them an anchor? I mean, to just keep... Well, how do they eventually settle up? Do they get to settle up at all, or does it just pay the fine?
They can simply pay the fine, or like with others, they can go to court and contest it. And it'll be up to the determination of the traffic commissioner or judge hearing the matter, whether it's upheld or dismissed.
Okay, so they can be just dismissed, but they have to go through the procedures and stuff?
Yes, they would have to go through legal procedure, appearing in court.
Okay, okay. Okay, that answers all my questions. I do like the fact that you are... There's one aspect of the amendments that I think is good is that we give them 30 days, but we're also, during that 30 days, there is the education period, trying to get them into some sort of program, rehab, mental counseling, whatever it is that they might need. So there's one aspect of the ordinance I think is kind of a good idea.
Okay, Councilmember Keener?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I agree with Councilmember Nyhart in that the situation that brought this to the forefront, the single RV, that situation is now over. And I think, like her, it's unwise to make or modify an ordinance for one occurrence or one vehicle. And the second point is on the trailers. Yeah, I've seen people parking trailers on my street, like I said, and I... In fact, I had one neighbor that parked a boat trailer that wasn't licensed, and it sat there for a year in front of his house, you know? But I didn't call the cops. He was a nice guy, and I just thought, oh, well. And so that's one level of discretion. And then another level of discretion is when the cops are called, they come out and they mark the tires and come back and check them, you know, probably not exactly 12 hours later or whatever, but they check them. And they exhibit discretion also, to their immense credit. So it seems to me that for the two ordinances that we have now, the 10 to 6 restriction on occupancy of vehicles and the 12 hours for parking trailers, that making them more... No, not punitive, but covering more time or making them more difficult to comply with is not going to... comply with is not going to net very many more convictions. And thirdly, as other people have said, homelessness in vehicles, we should have compassion for the people that are living in them and not make it more difficult for them. So.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, do you agree?
I see actually three situations. One is people that have needs, they're visiting relatives or whatever, have needs to park, maybe even stay in their vehicle, or maybe just be parked. Second one, people behaving badly and don't care about anybody or anything and just hope to get away with everything. And then the extreme life challenges. So, presently, the present restrictions actually do put the legitimately, I shouldn't say legitimately homeless, but I mean those in a hard way that have nothing else besides going out and sleeping under a bush somewhere, they're already illegal. So, I would like to see something done to make it not illegal. I'm not that familiar with the language in safe parking. I would think that maybe if we looked at those documents, we could find something. I also noticed that for South City, they use some language that I think we could be creative, too. Theirs referred to the alleviation of sickness or temporary inability to operate a vehicle, which makes a lot of common sense. I don't see why it wouldn't be equally simple, I would think, to say something about, I tried to do a stab at some language, if I can find where I put it. That when there appears to be homeless people living in a vehicle, that they could be referred to bona fide agencies to determine the legitimacy of their extreme human need, and that we would set up a wraparound program like you outlined, steps of how to get them involved incrementally. I certainly don't think that 30 days is reasonable. People are getting notices now of 30 days, and they have to, their mortgage is a problem, or they have to leave, and I don't know where they're going. I think that maybe how living in your car went down, but I think in the next, in the last three weeks, in the future three weeks, I think we're going to be seeing that. And whether it's here in our own town or somewhere else, maybe along Skyline, I don't know. I think that's going to just increase. I think we, I would really, I would not want to look away from trying to solve this in some immediate compassionate manner. When it comes to the other one, like 114, with specific regard to trailers, maybe we could add some language dedicated to commercial usage, whether hitched or unhitched. I'm sure there would be a little bit more language needed than that. That we could put into the language, tweak the 4-7112 to make people behaving badly pay up fast so that their rudeness to their community is not tolerated. So, I see these as two, actually three ways of going. I do realize that the community is fed up with people behaving badly, and that needs to be done. But I also think that when it comes to those on the verge of homelessness or are homeless, and I've met a family of three children in that situation, that that's, that would be my first priority. I would like it fixed now. And then the third one, you know, people do have relatives visit, or they have a trailer that they need, they're truck drivers across country, and they're home for the weekend. I mean, what do they have to do? So, I see it as three things, and I would really like to start with the language you already incorporated, but make it something like what I suggested, and maybe better languages found in, what did we say, safe parking or something like that. Because I think the other thing I mentioned the last time is, if we can go that route, we still have, if you're living in your car, like Councilwoman Nyheart said, you are vulnerable. And not only that, the whole community is vulnerable because bathroom issues and secondarily garbage issues.
Thank you for your comments. I'll make my comments relatively short. I think the rest of council has stated things pretty, with a lot of clarity, and I appreciate their comments. I'd just like to start out by saying thank you to staff, because I really believe that council directed staff to find a solution for the trailer. And you came with some ordinances that were in existence, and then we said, you know, you need to do more. You told us about the issues about trying to give tickets or trying, you know, with this one individual. And honestly, I really believe that, you know, we got a lot, we heard from the community a great deal about this one trailer that was parked on Roberts Road. There was a lot of frustration from a lot of people. But in reflection, that, and we were reminded during that council session that this is about one.
One issue.
One issue. So, I don't want to have some sort of knee-jerk reaction with unintended consequences. And I do believe there is something wrong about further criminalizing homelessness or people that are really having a tough time and have to sleep in their cars. I can't even begin to imagine how difficult that situation is, especially if you have a family or children that you're trying to look after as well. So, I am going to reiterate that I really appreciate the work you've done, working with the Resource Center and working with the variety of different people in Pacifica that are going through this. Obviously, there's probably more individuals that you come into contact with, as well as your sensitivity to the issue and working, you know, on the homeless count and the outreach programs that our core agencies have. I think it's all so important. It just shows the compassion that our police and city staff have in this community. And I really want to commend you for all the work that you've done and the core agencies have done as well. I think it's incredibly important and really points to where our direction is really headed. Having said that, I don't think I want to see any changes, almost with my apologies, because I know you've spent a lot of time on this issue, and it was not a choice you made, you know, on your own. So, I just, I really commend you for the work on this. And personally, I don't think I would like to see any changes in ordinances at this time, but I'd like to hear how council would like to proceed.
Personally, are you calling on me?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question of our city attorney. Were there particular things that were found in our current ordinances that absolutely need to get cleaned up?
No, no. It was clearly just a response to the direction that we got from council. I will say that rather than try to wordsmith the ordinance tonight, that, you know, either the council makes a decision that we're going to table this ordinance for now, or if there is direction on how to amend it, I hear that some council members are interested in addressing the trailer aspect of the ordinance as opposed to the human habitation. If you wanted to split it up, you could give us direction, we could bring something back. But my strong recommendation would be that the council either table it or provide direction to staff, but not try and wordsmith the ordinance tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I want to add my apologies, but I do want to say, I said on the night we were talking about this, I hate doing things based on one incident, ever. You've solved the incidents, you've done an amazing job, and Anita and your crew, thank you. Police, thank you. And I hope that we do have that kind of compassion with these kinds of situations again, going forward. I also, you know, in respect to the community at large, don't want to become known as, you know, the place for anybody to come at any time. I mean, you've got to have a balance. But currently, we have an ordinance, we have this situation. I'm all about the trailer piece, because if that makes it cleaner. But I can also think of examples where having it connected doesn't make a darn bit of difference, because the vehicle couldn't possibly pull the trailer anyway. So, I don't know if that makes it, I'm willing to give up both and table both aspects instead of. So, that would be my personal preference.
Counselmember O'Neill?
I have a question for the city attorney. Okay, we have the ordinance we have now, which this one person pushed the envelope, right? But per the chief of police, he was never cited because of his deliberate evasion with, you know, hiding a dog and all of that. But he was still doing some egregious stuff, putting human waste on the street, et cetera. Is there, could an ordinance be written, or the existing ordinance amended, so that there's some sort of threshold at which something could be kicked? And I'm not saying we do wordsmith it tonight, but basically some threshold that turns this person over from just being an average person down on their luck to kind of like a menace or detriment to the health and well-being of people. Do you see that being possible, or is it out of?
Well, anything is possible. But I would say that I believe the attempt that the city attorney's office and the police department tried to take with expanding the hours of the current ordinance is a way to address those issues, understanding that we are giving a lot of discretion to the police to determine when that situation rises to the level of requiring police action. So, my recommendation is, if you want to try to alleviate the situation that had occurred on Roberts Road, this method of just expanding the hours of not allowing human habitation is a way to do it. It's a practical way to do it, to start, and even if we don't wordsmith it tonight, that's what you would be asking us to go back and do. My concern is, as you've heard, there is a lot of constitutional protections for people who are in their vehicles, staying in their vehicles, and we would have to be very, very careful that any ordinance that we drafted, other than what we have here tonight, is assured that it will provide due process for everybody.
Well, that's why I asked you.
I'm not sure who's first. Mayor Protem, do you agree?
The fact that it came because of one situation, I really don't worry about that. I almost welcome it, because, as I mentioned before, I've heard before where people are, that, for example, drive a vehicle and are coming home to be with their family, they've asked, what do I do so that I don't get evicted? And then you always have people behaving badly, like the one that was told, and we would, the community would like teeth on that. And then today's situation is the homeless, and the present law makes it illegal for somebody to be in there. I don't see why, with these two ordinances, one, the 1112, and then the 114 seems to be about vehicle occupancy, that just tweaking it again, some more, we might actually cover those things. And I'm glad you don't want us to wordsmith tonight. But if you come back again without the three, I would say at this point, I could live with the third one about, I don't know. It's a serious issue when people can't be with their families because they're driving a truck. And the little bit of time they get at home, they get cited. So, I would really like to see the three wordsmithed, and I'm thinking that it's 47112 is one, and 47114 is a separate one. So, it doesn't have to be too convoluted? I don't know. I just...
I can tell you that what we would need first is clear direction from the full council as to, you know, what a majority of you want to do. I think the first question is, do you want to adopt the ordinance as is, which addresses both human habitation and trailers? Or do you want to take no action on the ordinance tonight and table it, and, you know, we will not bring it back to you until the council requests that, you know, this issue be brought again? And then three, whether or not you want us to address certain portions of the existing ordinance, either with regard to human habitation or the trailer. And once you make that basic decision, then I think we would ask you more questions about, you know, in the event you choose option number three, what you'd like us to come back with.
Anything else? Are you, Mayor Protem?
No, I'm just trying to reread the two proposals again. Could somebody do them so I'm clear on specifically what the two are for this evening?
Okay, how about, I have a couple comments from Councilmember Keener and O'Neill. We'll hear from them, and then see if somebody has a motion that they want to make, and see what kind of support we have at that time. Counselmember Keener?
Yeah, this is real quick. I support tabling both of them.
Okay, thank you. Counselmember O'Neill?
I was just going to make a motion to table it.
Okay, there's a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a question on that?
Sure.
When you say table it, what are we doing?
We are not...
We're not giving any direction as to wordsmithing?
Yeah, that would mean taking no action, and we will not be bringing this back to you unless there is a request by the council to bring it back at a future date. So, tabling means you're not taking any action on this, and
You're putting it back on.
Staff is no, staff will do no more work on this item.
I don't think that, so Councilman O'Neill said you're putting it back on the chief?
I was being a joke.
Oh, oh.
No, it's almost like a note to the ordinance, we are just not doing anything at this time. Okay, so we have a first and a second.
My only question is, do I need to read it, or just say what I said was fine? Okay.
Do you need to say that you're tabling two things, or one?
No, just one. It was just one ordinance that contained two different provisions.
Did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, can we vote?
Yes, let's vote.
I think you didn't mean that.
I'll restate the motion.
Can we vote again? Because the second, you're confused.
Yeah, I'll restate the motion. I make a motion that we table the ordinance we've been talking about, meaning we don't want to do anything with it tonight.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, so...
But there again, can I have a clarification? I thought I just asked if it meant that we're doing nothing, not just tonight, but nothing.
Doing nothing?
Nothing, not just tonight, this is finished.
Unless it's brought forth again in some context.
Yeah, if the council majority requests it to come forward, then it would come forward.
Okay, we have a council member moved approval, and it was seconded by Councilmember Keener, so let's take a vote.
I can do that much, anyway.
And that passes four to one.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thanks.
Hey, we're almost done.
Almost done. Have a break. Okay, the next item under, under consideration is item six, mid-year budget report and resolution amending 2014-15 budget. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor Irvin, Mayor Protem degree, members of the city council. My name is Lorenzo Hines, I'm the assistant city manager, and I am here to present the Our 2014-15 budget was adopted on June 23rd, 2014. Right now, our operating budget has 26 million, 889,000 dollars. With this mid-year update, we have some proposed adjustments to both projected revenues and expenses that reflect current information. The good news is, the city continues to maintain a balanced budget. To get to the bottom line, our general fund revenues are approximately 569,000 dollars higher than projections at the original adoption back in June of last year. Our general fund expenditures are projected to be on target at this time. We'll first cover revenues. We are, we wanted to highlight some of the things that we're seeing with our revenue streams. We've got, first of all, property taxes. Right now, property taxes are trending upwards, reflecting some estimates that we've received from San Mateo County. We received a letter from them back in October of 2014 indicating that there were increased revenues headed our way in the form of property taxes. Therefore, we've revised our estimate to increase the projected revenues by about 251,000 dollars. Retail sales tax are flat, but trending slightly lower, and this is mainly due to the, the fact that we've had lower gas prices, pretty much nationwide, but also lower gas prices here in Pacifica. So, we've got a small decrease of 15,000. Other business taxes, they're flat, but trending upwards, and we've got a small increase of about 20,000. As far as our department and program revenues, we, we see that those are trending upwards. We've got an increase in building permit activity, which we deem is the, is caused by an improving economy. We've got an increase in the projection for vehicle license fees, and we've also seen increased revenues in childcare and senior programs. So, the increase generated by all three of those items are about 329,000 dollars. Our expenses at this time are trending as prescribed in the adopted budget. So, in addition to revised revenue and expenditure estimates, we also have some other requests for budgetary adjustments. With in parks, beaches, and recreation, there is a request to upgrade one recreation specialist to one meals-on-wheels slash transportation coordinator. The level of responsibilities has increased from the original position, and therefore the department is requesting an increase in the level of the position. The increase is just incremental, it is roughly 2,500 dollars to 7,200 dollars annually in general fund. So, again, we're just upgrading an already existing position. In the city manager's office, more specifically, the assistant city manager's office, what we want to do is transfer one information technology position that is currently housed in the Pacifica Police Department, and bring that back to the city manager's office so all of our IT staff can be under one division and one umbrella. So, there is no increase or decrease in the budget, we're just shifting expenditure authority from the Pacifica PD into the city manager's office. Another request that we have here is expenditure authority from the Housing and Lew Fund, and I believe that's Fund 22. The Housing and Lew Fund is a deposit fund that, that developers contribute to, instead of building below-market housing as part of their projects, they get to contribute to this fund. At the same time, the city is a member of a joint powers authority called Heart of San Mateo, and their mission is to facilitate collective efforts between the county and cities in San Mateo County to create more affordable housing. And the city's annual membership fee in this organization is somewhere between 12 and 16,000 annually, and we propose to charge this expense for this year to the Housing and Lew Fund, given the relationship between Heart's mission and our intention with the Housing and Lew Fund. So, through the number of adjustments, and we expect a balanced budget for 2014-15, and revenues again are projected to be approximately 569,000 dollars higher. The attached resolution includes a general fund budget summary that increases total operating budget to 27 million, 457,617 dollars. And at this point, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much for that staff report. Do I have questions from council? Councilmember Nyheart?
Um, more comments than questions, but I do have a couple of things that I want to ask about. I mean, one, just as a matter of note, it's always historically relevant, the budget was a little over 32 million when I first got on council, so you incredibly frugal. So, I appreciate that. Second thing I wanted to comment on is the movement of, um, the IT. I'm thrilled. Does that mean you get to utilize them in City Hall and throughout the city? That, that would be an awesome...
It, it provides more support for citywide IT services. We've got a talented young man over in the PD, yes.
Yay. And second comment about the in-law housing, that is actually incredibly appropriate, surprising that we hadn't thought about it. I believe we maintain our relationship with Heart, partly because of Ocean View. Is that correct? I'm pretty sure that's why, there's a reason we had to stay in. But I would also like us to encourage, to really think about this issue that we keep being confronted with, with affordable housing. There's, there are areas of town, particularly in the north, particularly around here, where we could densify, where, where we already have a lot of apartment buildings. There is a change in priority development areas, and I wish our planning interim director was here, in which, instead of requiring 100 acres, it'd only be 40 acres. There are also issues in which we could make connections to transportation that could be direct via shuttles and a number of other things, that we could make the nexus of a priority development area. If that was the case, Heart and Mid Penn would be great allies to have. So, maintaining that relationship, because Mid Penn has done some amazing things, working with the development community, to actually build decent affordable housing. I mean, we didn't have to go to, we have one Habitat for Humanity, we could think about that issue, just in terms of an apartment building, or something along those lines. So, it's worth having that relationship. We don't have anybody on that board, but city selection committee actually chooses board members, the cities participate in Heart, and it can be a good ally. So, I think there's, there's a definite reason there to, to hang out, and otherwise, yay.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Um, looking at page eight, so you basically, the attached resolution includes a general fund budget summary that increases the total operating budget to 27,450, and that's just based on the revenues, there's no increase in expenditure.
Not at this time.
I'm saying that more for the public benefit, you know, and stuff. I agree with a lot of what councilmember Nyheart said in regards to, Mid Penn has done some very nice development, the South San Francisco school site, the Franklin development down in Redwood City, and then Habitat just finished one up in, on Mission Boulevard near Top of the Hill. However, moving the city annual membership fee from 12, to, from the general fund to the Affordable Housing Fund, I understand the concept, the concern I have is that that fund has so little of it, and as the gentleman from last week said, that is money that we can, as a city, as a, you know, entity, can invest in to help with matching funds, et cetera, and I would hate to see what little money, the 345,000?
Yes.
That's in there, sorry, I keep turning to her, but I guess I should turn to you now, right? Um, you know, to be depleted at whatever, 16,000, 15,000 a year, let's say, you know, I mean, all of a sudden, in three years, we're down to 300,000, which is, gives us less money to actually put into what we're supposed to. Well, if we keep it in the general operating budget, it is a perfectly acceptable expense. I'm clear, I'm not saying I want to get out of Heart at all, okay? I'm just questioning as to which general ledger you hit. So, um, I would, I would prefer to keep the, the membership fee in the general fund instead of moving it to the Affordable Housing Fund. And I don't know if this is city attorney, city manager, or who, but is there any way to get a revision of the formula for affordable housing? Because like Harmony One at that point was, well, two questions. Harmony One at this point is a 40 million dollar project, right? 10 houses of four mill apiece. You then have, okay, but I do, I, I recognize that once the entitlements were given and the permissions given, whenever it was, seven, you were, you were here, Sue, what, seven years ago?
Eight, yeah.
Yeah, you voted for it. Seven years ago, it might have been a 30 million dollar project, but those fees were still sat at whatever was the two houses, and then we changed it to, the developer asked for the fee. Is there any way to increase those fees with some factor of inflation, or to change the formula to try to...
Not, not after the discretionary approvals have been granted. There isn't a way to go back to that developer, unless there was something in the conditions of approval which staff can check on to say that, you know, we are imposing an inflationary factor, but that would have been, that would have had to have happened at the time the approvals were granted.
So, in, if another development comes along like Harmony One, we could actually put in the approval of the minutes or the permits, how affordable housing fees to be increased at the rate of inflation or whatever?
We, we would have to do something to that effect, I'm not sure what, what the fee is, but we, we would, we would need to do something to address that.
And can, is there any way to change the formula so that, you know, on a project of 30 million dollars, just ballpark, the fee's only 345, is there any way to increase the formula, or is that, because I heard it was, they were told us it was just what's customary in San Mateo County?
Well, it, it has to be reasonable.
Right.
So, I would say that, to the extent it can be modified, I, I don't, I don't know to what great extent it could be modified, because I'm assuming at the time, that formula was based on factors that, that may or may not have changed, but it would be difficult to say in the abstract whether or not a new formula can be...
Well, I was just looking, because we were talking about the Housing Affordable Fund, but I would be, I certainly want to maintain the membership in Heart, but I would be reluctant to start hitting the affordable housing fee for it, I'd rather keep the charge into the general fund.
Councilmember Keener?
Um, well, I totally agree with councilmember O'Neal. You know, I, I figure we should keep our membership in Heart, there's no question about that, and it's perfectly legal, and it's sensible to charge the expense for that to the Housing and Lew Fund, but I have the same problem with it that councilmember O'Neal does, that will reduce the Housing and Lew Fund slowly over the years, and, and we may need it, as, you know, matching money for a grant or whatever. So, that's where I stand.
Mayor Protem degree?
I had the same concerns, but I asked if the general fund could be used to support the in-law funds, and I thought I got an answer of yes, it's possible if the council chooses that. So, thinking of how we're so tight on our budget for everything, I was thinking that maybe it is wiser to move it out of the general fund now, when we really have no use for it that I know of, and that if we did have a use, we could then vote to use the general funds to beef up the in-law. Second issue was what you mentioned, at the time, if I remember correctly the conversation, everything was based on what was the going rates at the time, and I think where we missed out is that we didn't put in a clause regarding inflation or some such thing. So, why wouldn't we be able, not to revisit Harmony, but to revisit the, the in-law fee? Is that not acceptable?
No, that, that's possible. Thank you. Councilmember Nyheart?
I, I totally am fine with the discussion as is, and I actually agree with Mayor Protem, particularly currently, and particularly because of how tight things are. But I understand the concerns. Essentially, do you give money to the resource center? I mean, this is going to come along. Do you give it to the beach coalition, do you give it to affordable housing? At which point do you make that decision? And that's really what you're deciding, and I can go either way, but I think that it's going to take more coordination with a developer at this point in time to actually move us forward in this arena, and that's why I'd be, begin to explore with Mid Penn exactly how to do that. And there's often other matching funds that can be utilized as well. So, I'm okay with it either way, but I'm particularly okay with it coming out of what is appropriate. On the second thing, though, on the affordable housing, I was under the impression, now there's a lot of, of, there's a lot of state language around affordable, the definition, the issue of the formula, how much you can ask, I mean, I'm wondering how much of this is already pre-prescribed. I bet there probably is an inflationary formula, but I bet, you know, we didn't use it. So, but all of this is pretty much in state regulations, in the implementation of affordable law. I mean, affordable itself is sort of a, people think of it as somehow, we're, we're building almost section eight housing, and it's really not. It's, it's, the affordable piece is based on 80% of what your median income is, and the median income in the county is like 120 some thousand, and the median in Pacifica is 94. So, you're 80% of that, you're still making 60, 70,000, and you still can't manage to find a place to live when you're looking at apartments renting for 3,000, 3,200. It's, it's, it's out of whack entirely. We don't have good answers, but I think work, we should develop some kind of systematic plan to work toward how we could utilize and capitalize on both Heart and Mid Penn in having a project here, something to work toward.
Wow, I'm not going to say anything today. Okay, Mayor...
You can jump in anywhere, it's your discretion.
It's all good. It's all good. Mayor Protem, do you agree?
Well, just regarding Hart, how we got Hart for Ocean View was because the PIA group actually wanted Hart to come in to help us out with affordable housing, and at the time, we had payments, we had to pay for Ocean View, so there was a time when they couldn't do anything with existing affordables. And so we asked if they would change their laws to help us with an existing housing, and that's how Hart came here for Ocean View. So there's that, they are a source of funding as well. They would be very happy to help, I'm sure, with our in-law, for anything we could put up for affordable, if we got something going here.
Councilmember O'Neil, questions?
I just kind of wanted to respond, is like, my experience when I was working with Mid Penn for the school district, one of the things that they said was a prime factor in working with the city or whatever, is that the city had some skin in the game. And so I would just be reluctant to make our skin, instead of a skin, a little cell or something by spending the money every year. I mean, I understand the concept and Hart and Mid Penn and all that, I support every bit of that. It's just, I don't, unless it's for a project, I kind of hate to see that fund depleted, that's all. What little we have in it.
Okay. Councilmember Keener?
Yep. So about the amount that we do have in it, it was my understanding that the actual in-law fee paid by the Harmony developers was set by an organization in Oakland. And, you know, several people have commented to me that they thought it was too low, you know, I have no idea. But it sounds as if it's a matter of negotiation. You can set the fee wherever you want, and the developer might say, well, I think I'll just build a house then.
It really is based on a formula, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't revisit the formula to assure that it's updated and current.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions.
I just want to say, I think it's a really good conversation. I think it is interesting to find out how much, you know, leeway we have in terms of the formula, if this is something we should be looking at in the future, and also how we're going to be utilizing the funds in the in-law housing. Great questions for us going forward, so I appreciate those being brought up. I just, a quick question about the department program revenues, that's pretty impressive, a $329,000 improvement over what we had thought. And so you mentioned building permit activity, so if you could just kind of take those apart, because you mentioned three, the building permit activity increase in the vehicle license fees, and increased revenues in childcare and senior programs, if you?
Okay. So let me give you a little context. In the general fund, the general fund currently has 117 different revenue streams that flows into it. On the expenditure side, it's 537 expense accounts. So I just wanted to give you some context. So going back to the revenues, there are about, there are four revenue streams that are in the building, that are the result of building activity, that are driving the building portion of that explanation. We've got building permits in general. We've got a budget of $268,000 for that revenue stream. Based on the activity that I saw at December 31st, and having conversations with the folks in planning and the planning department, we're comfortable that that 268 will grow to 356,000 or 357,000 by the end of the year, if the December pace keeps up. And you're going to hear me say that phrase quite a bit, if the pace keeps up. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, just can I ask a quick question about that? Does that have to do with Harmony One, or is that just?
I think it's just an uptick in building activity that we're seeing in the citywide.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So, which is good news. Along with the building permits, there are electrical permits, and we're seeing, we had a budget of 27,000, we're now projecting about 39,000. And I'm just giving you the big ones, because the building permits, there's about 15 streams. And we've got engineering and inspection fee, we had budgeted that fee at 123,600. We're now projecting it at about 159,000 through the end of January, again, if the activity keeps up. Let me see, and here's plan checking fees. We budgeted at 113,000, and we're seeing those revenues projected to come in at 141,000. So that's building and permits. Our vehicle license fees, we had budgeted 3.2 million for vehicle license fees. Given the activity that, again, that I saw at the end of December, I am comfortable projecting that revenue coming in at 3.3. So I'm thinking there's going to be an extra 100,000 there. So we've got those, and we've got some activity in childcare and senior programs. We've got a, some miscellaneous grants that come in from San Mateo County, and we have budgeted those grants at about $190,000, but based on the activity that we've seen, and based on my conversations with Director Perez, we're thinking those are going to come in at about 280,000. We've got also a general state contract that we've received, an increase, and we've got a COLA increase as a result of the general state contract. So we were budgeting these revenues at 473,000, we're comfortable now budgeting them at 506,000. Again, I am just isolating four streams out of the many streams that Parks drives. We've got a, more children from the general fund, or general contract, full cost, and Director Perez can give you more details on that if you want to get into the detail. We budgeted 450,000, and we're projecting another 100,000 at 550,000 right now. And again, this is just more kids in the program. And we've got also participation-driven costs in the parent, one of the, I guess it's the parents' participation in the programs, and we were budgeting at 60,000, then we're projecting 110,000 for that particular program. So it's called parent SMCOE pre-full cost fees. And so based on my conversations with Director Perez, based on the activity that I've seen in December, those are the things that are driving my thoughts about revenues coming, going up from departmental and program activities.
Okay, well, that's great news, so thank you so much to you and to staff, who's obviously running some great programs. We need, as everybody knows, every dollar we're getting in, so that's just great, and it's nice to know that people are happy with the programs that we're providing. Oh, I have another question from council. Oh, from councilmember Nyhert.
Yeah, actually, it's more of a comment, based on our last question, it occurs to me that it would be probably a really good thing for us to have a presentation on all the pieces of affordable housing, how it's regulated, how the housing element comes together. I think the organization you're talking about in Oakland is actually the Association of Bay Area Governments, which does the population projection, the piece of it that they project growth in the region, they do all of that element of it. There's a lot of different pieces to this that end up coming together to make up how many units each city in the county is allocated in terms of housing for growth, and then how you want to trade those off. And I think there's so much complexity there. Before we go back and revisit the general plan update, I think it would help us to all get on the same page, knowing those pieces and where that information comes from. Does that make sense to anybody?
If I might, Lori Tinfo, city manager, it sounds like a very hot topic, especially given the goal setting. I will look at the timing of it, as you know, we have an interim planning director for probably two months, and then hopefully the permanent person will be on board, so there might be some more ramp up, which may take some time to put this before the council. But it is definitely something that we can.
There are also people that are very adept at presenting that information as well. I'm talking more about just how it works, not the particulars of what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Less for staff to have.
Can I just bring it out to, nobody has cards, so then we can have comments. Okay, so I don't have any cards right now, so if anybody from the public would like to speak on this issue, please bring up a card, next two minutes or so. So I'm not seeing anybody move. So now we're going to bring it back to council, and we'll have some comments, and then we can go from there. Okay, councilmember O'Neil?
I just also kind of piggyback, I would like a future, maybe as part of our goal setting or whatever, revisit of the in-law parking fees, because I know we're collecting like $3,000 of space, but it actually costs between, what, 10,000 or 15,000, I think, to build a parking space. I think it would be good for us to revisit that, and if possible, but this would probably connect more with what Mary Ann, the in-law housing fee. So, and maybe even our park fees too, because I think we do have park fees, right, when a developer, yeah. Maybe all those insundry fees for amenities, so to speak.
Councilmember Nyhert?
We were looking for a topic for a joint session with Planning Commission, this might be the good one. Just suggesting, since we have one in the audience.
Not against that.
Do I have any other comments from council? No, just, again, I'd just like to say, I'm thrilled to hear that we're at least ahead, not behind, our revenues are outpacing our expenditures, that's the direction that we've been trying to go, and I look forward to hearing, you know, in the months to come, our five-year financial plan. Can you actually comment on when that might be coming out, or that will be coming out?
The long-term financial plan is scheduled for your next meeting.
Oh, excellent, I should know that, but.
It'll be sort of the kickoff for the budget.
Okay.
I'd love to hear more about that. Before you win the report, we are asking that you move to adopt the resolution, so that we can make the changes that we've asked for. Certainly you can say without the change in the Housing in Lew fee.
Okay, thank you.
If you do that for us, that'd be much appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Nyhert?
Well, see, so I think the Housing in Lew fee may have a different vote, can we take that separately?
Well, you should take, my suggestion would be, take that vote first, and then deal with the resolution, so.
Okay. So I'll make a motion.
Have a discussion on what you want to do with the Housing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the prospect of actually using it out of the in-law housing fund, the Hart fees, because of the nexus there, knowing that we can always come back with general fund money later.
So just to clarify, a yes vote means the money will come out, the membership fee for Hart will come out of the housing fund, workforce housing fund?
Wait, we need a second.
We need a second.
I just.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, and that passes three to two.
Now you can move to.
And then we'll move to adopt the rest of the recommendations in the mid-year budget.
The resolution.
The resolution itself, okay.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And with that, I adjourn the meeting in honor of Bill Bent, an amazing human being, and he will be sorely missed.